Okay.
Thank you.
We will call the meeting to order. The first item up is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Um, got it.
Yeah, I moved to adopt the agenda for committee of the whole.
Motion in a second. Are there any further discussion? All right, I will go down the roster. Reverend Mack, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Coates?
Yes.
Mr. Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Hi.
I vote yes. Ms. Green? And Mr. Holland, Chad?
He's not present.
Okay. The next item up then is review of public comments.
It's been submitted to us.
Okay, those have been submitted. So then the next item is the school reopening.
Thank you Reverend Mack. I think the slides are being put up now for this section. We want to talk to you a little bit about the the reopening itself, our facilities, what the attendance looks like in this section. And then in the next section of the SEC Committee, we'll talk to you about metrics and we do have some good news on metrics. So I'll just start with the overview. Erica, if you want to advance the slide to the next one, that will help the public sort of see what we're talking about. It's important to note that we had two different starts. They happened simultaneously. We started up about, we think about 27,000 students online, the remainder in person. It was just incredible to see the excitement of teachers and students after being away for six months. All things considered, we had a really smooth opening with some expected bugs and some really unexpected challenges in technology that Jeff and others will talk about in just a little bit. The new protocols and procedures are in place. We have very few challenges with them, but those that we did, the challenges we did have have been addressed really quickly. As I mentioned, we have about a quarter of our students returning in person by choice. We have additional parents wanting to send their children back and thanks to your action last Friday, we'll be able, a week ago Friday, we'll be able to do that safely and as quickly as possible. As soon as we get that done, we need to stabilize operations and run the first nine weeks without any additional changes. So that's sort of an overview of this section. I'll turn it over to Jeff Barrowe now to start with the facilities update. Jeff?
Thanks boss. Next slide please. So I've got several slides and a lot of pictures to show you since we all can't get out to see everything, since we've all been in school for a week. But I do want to talk about some of the key things that have happened from the maintenance side despite all of the COVID work that had to be done. You can see the number of projects that we've completed up here. 10 new air conditioning systems. We replaced doors and hardware in six schools. Five new roofs. We repainted nine schools and put five new playgrounds in. I've listed the larger of the projects below there. Some significant work at St. John's and Burke High Schools as well as Bell Hall Elementary School. You'll see more on the fixed cost of ownership in upcoming board meetings from the previous year. So we'll keep you updated on all of the, all of the finances that you've provided us to, that resulted in some great projects. From a food service perspective, we set up a system to pick up meals for both virtual and remote children. That can be done in a daily pickup or it can be done in a one-week bundle. The one-week bundle has been extremely popular. Gives families the opportunity to just come by the schools once and they can come by one school if they have multiple kids. We're continuing on with that process this week and we do have information that we, from the Department of Agriculture, that we can continue. The summer meals program, which means free meals for all of all kids, breakfast and lunch. That's extremely beneficial to our solvency from a nutrition services perspective. We'll be working with local providers to see if there's a way we can find a better way to push meals out into the community using community volunteers. So more of that to follow. The next slide highlights transportation and information technology. Transportation, as you know, we started with a new vendor this year for student. Things were extremely successful. They had all their drivers, all their buses, all new buses on the road this year. We still have some state buses that don't have air conditioning for you all to just be aware of. We're slowly fading those out, but we are at the whim of the state to make that happen completely. Eighty-two percent of our buses have air conditioning right now. All of our contract buses have air conditioning. No significant issues were reported. We have a significant number of special needs children that are transported to school and that went extremely well. And we are now, as of right now, documenting where the children are sitting on their buses so that if we have to do contact tracing, we're all set up to, we're all set up to do that, to know where the kids were sitting, to know who they were close to. From an IT perspective, as Dr. Postaway mentioned, this is probably our most problematic area and there's not one single issue that we can point to as the overall problem. I've listed a few of them there. The first problem we had were student IDs. Students went in and changed their passwords on day one and they forgot passwords on day two. And getting those passwords back, we now have made sure that the students, that the schools have more than one person that can reset passwords. Though those don't need to come into the IT help desk, so we've, we've straightened that one out. We had an iPad launch issue with JMF, Jamf, and we're working through those issues as we stand right now. We've got a Chromebook issue. One of our models has challenges with map testing and we're trying to replace that. We did not know about that issue in advance. We heard that from the state on Friday. So Chromebooks, we're trying to try to get that straightened out. I will say that by the end of last week, all of our, all of our schools had enough devices that were operational for our students. So having a device that's operational at this point should not be a problem. Now we've just got to work through the individual issues. The MiFi devices, we've issued about 1,700 of those and those have been a challenge as well. We've had some that haven't been able to come up and I will tell you that we are, we are among every district in the state that's had problems with MiFi and that's being worked out at the state level. As you know, those were provided by the state at our request and we're having some challenges with those. We're working to, we're working to get the state's contract help, making sure that those devices are fully up and operational. The next slide are more IT. This, this slide was actually put together by Learning Services. I'll go ahead and cover it though, since a good portion of it is actually work that we're doing together. There is a tech support info sheet available, which means parents can fill out that sheet, get it turned in electronically and a person that knows the issue will call them back. And we implemented that at the end of last week and we had upwards of 100 phone calls come in, or 100 of these submissions, 100 of these forms were submitted and we're able to get back to the parent with somebody who knows that issue, whether it be Canvas, iPads, passwords, whatever. We're making sure that we're finding other avenues to get help to the, to the parents. One of the concerns was, was the background in the Zoom calls and, and that ability for principals to send out the standard background of their school has been provided and that's actually being used already. So no longer do you have to worry about what is behind the student in their Zoom call. They use the standard school background as part of, as part of Zoom. All of us, all of us the same. Canvas, I mentioned the iPad issues. I mentioned the password issues. Canvas is another challenge that we've had. We've got teams working through those issues. It all starts with what is in the system in Power School before it actually gets to an actual Canvas problem. And our Learning Services team, our school teams are working to, to get that straightened out and, and working in the right, working right for everybody. I quickly wanted to show you some pictures. My next slide's on the new school, since you all haven't been, been out there yet. CE Williams opened for all seventh and eighth graders in West Ashley last week. This is their front entrance and their main, their main lobby when you walk into that facility. Everything is going well at CE Williams as, as we stand right now. One interesting note is as new students were walking around the school, seeing everything, teachers actually had their, their laptops with Zoom to kids at home, showing them the new school as they were walking their classes through, which was really a nice way to get all students involved in that process. Camp Road is our next slide. This was our toughest school this year. We weren't able to get teachers in there until Friday before school started. But they were, they were very appreciative of the new spaces that they have and we're very pleased to have a new middle school for District Three, James Island. Cooper River Center for Advanced Studies. The picture on the left is the main space looking down. That open area will be great space for competitions and displays. The glass door to the left rolls up to expand that space and behind the glass door is essentially an auditorium with some roll-down seats and so it'll be a great meeting space. It's part of the media AV tech program that's in there. That space is combined with the learning space. It'll be a great opportunity for those students that are pursuing media technology. The center picture is a, really a college-like setting for looking at careers and ways to move forward. The school's very pleased with that intimate space there. And on the right is the Health Science Wing or Health Science Room that is there right now. It's one of upwards of 10 programs in that school available for our students. Two more, District Four Stadium. This is the new facility that will host its first home game. JV's on the 24th, varsity on the 25th, and then followed by a game on Saturday. So stall, military magnet, North Charleston High School and academic magnet will use this, this facility. I would like to point out, because there has been a lot of dialogue about seating capacities. We're right now using the same seating capacities that we use for graduation. The, the South Carolina High School League has come out and said, you need to maintain six-foot distancing among your guests, among the people that are there. And that is the same criteria we used for graduations this past summer. And so what that means for these two district stadiums is a capacity of 656 people as it stands right, as it stands right now. And we've answered that to many folks that came in this past weekend and asked about that determination. My last slide is Lucy Beckham High School. Opened this past week as well. You can tell from the center picture that it's a three-story building. We had a build on a pretty tight footprint for a high school. On the right-hand side is the entranceway with the gymnasiums on the right and the cafeteria on the left. A great space that if you're hosting large functions, you can flow between the two and you've got common bathrooms and other spaces that are shared between those two facilities, cafeteria and gymnasiums. With that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Postaway to talk about the enrollment numbers.
Thank you Jeff.
Can we ask questions before we go to the next topic?
Go ahead if you've got one, please.
Sure. That way we can at least stay on a little bit of track. I want to make sure that I understood you correctly. We are, you said something about the Department of Agriculture allowing us to continue the free meals. Am I accurate that you said?
That's through, that's through the end of, end of the calendar year. Every student gets free lunch and free breakfast.
Thank you, thank you. And every one of our controlled buses that are with our vendor have air conditioning.
Yes ma'am.
Issue lies with the state. And you said all students have operational devices? Does that mean all students have laptops or Chromebooks or?
Every student will have an iPad and a Chromebook. And I don't, I don't want to say every student has. I have not guaranteed that every single student has one, but we know that in every single school there are enough devices that are operational that if they haven't, they should have handed them out by now, but if not, they're really close.
So that's what, so, so every single school has enough working iPads or?
Chromebooks.
Or Prime Books to accommodate every student enrolled in that school?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Green.
A couple quick questions. Jeff, do you know the number of buses that don't have air conditioning?
Seventy-six. Seventy-six buses don't have air conditioning.
How many do we have rolling there?
How many do we have? What ma'am?
How many total buses?
We have 176 state buses with air conditioning. We have 175 contract buses with air conditioning. So eighty-two percent of our total bus fleet does have air conditioning.
Okay. And what age is using Zoom? What, what grade?
I, I want to say that it goes down to the?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, right. It's kindergarten through 12.
Kindergarten through 12.
Go ahead, Ms. Frazier, then we'll go.
Quick question on meals. Have we made any progress on partnering with community organizations to help on the education delivery? And then meals could go to that community nonprofit to distribute to children that would be coming in. I don't know if we've thought about that.
So we, we haven't, we haven't signed anybody up yet. We, we have to identify what rules have to be followed, such as the parents have to give us written permission that somebody can deliver meals to their house. So there, there are a number of logistics issues that we want to make sure we have in place before we bring in community partners with that.
Okay, just making sure we're thinking on that. Thank you. All right Reverend Collins?
Thank you Jeff. The roughly $6 million in COVID safety improvements. If you were to say per classroom, about how much would that average out per classroom across the district of that 5.9 million?
I, I would say the, a good rough number is a hundred dollars per student if you're looking at, oh, I'm sorry. If you're looking at five thou, five million bucks and we have roughly 5,000 classrooms.
Six million.
Six million. So a little over a hundred dollars per classroom.
Student.
A hundred dollars per student, thousand dollars.
So you got 18 students in a class?
Buy that, come on so.
Wait a minute, I think we're missing a zero. Let him use his calculator.
So if you've got 6 million divided by 5,000 classrooms is $1,200 per classroom.
We got 5,000 classrooms. Okay, so.
Divide 1,200, $1,200 divided by 18 students, 20 students, that, that would give you the per student cost.
You said 1,200?
Sixty bucks a student.
1,200 per classroom.
So, all right. Back, back about the teachers, of a teacher's desk also, the plastic glass, the area is plastic glass?
Each teacher was given a privacy shield, a plastic shield to put in front of their desk. So it's a, it has a handle on it. It sits down on top of their desk. It's got feet on it. They can pick it up and move it to a conference room if they want to take it with them. So each one received, we call it a sneeze guard. Each teacher received a sneeze guard. We made more than 3,000 of those.
Is it, is it a one flat surface or?
It's one, it's one, it's one flat surface. Again, we're assuming that, that the only place a child should be coming is right in front of them. So if a student comes to sit down in front of a teacher's desk, we don't want them coming around. They, they sit right in front of the teacher's desk. That's the expectation. The size and shape of the desk vary, so to create multiple shapes just wasn't practical with the amount of work that we had to do.
Well, how much more would it take?
Collins, if you could wrap up, I'm trying to keep everybody to two minutes and I did the same too.
Come on with that.
All right, yep, just on each topic and I'll come back.
Okay, what, what would it take to have the barriers where no one can come on the sides? Ask the teachers. Now, I'd say a student, for example, just gets excited and runs up to the teacher and not really thinking or something happens in the classroom and he's running, he's running to the front. Can we put up any kind of barrier, a safety barrier, a plastic glass or, or maybe any kind of obstacle to prevent that and to avoid unwanted contact at a reasonable cost?
So I, I think the, the first challenge would be if, if your intention is to keep them from coming around, going next to a teacher, you could create a situation where you've got a hazard with giving that teacher an opportunity to get out of a classroom quickly. If you're putting up a barrier on both sides of them, like a booth, how, you know, you have to worry about how the teacher gets out in a, in a Tommy manner if there's an emergency from around that, around that barrier. We're trying to keep our walkways clear around the classroom.
That's not what I, what I mean is a barrier enough that it takes extra activity to come to the teacher. And never, it's not so easy just to access her, but you gotta go around something, you know, it gives notice, it gives time to adjust or maybe time to prevent it. Not, not something that actually cuts off physical contact. Because my, my thoughts was that once they come into the door, maybe there would be a temporary wall where you go this way to your seat and the teacher goes to the right to her, to her desk. This is my, my final thinking. But just think about that for a little bit.
Yes, sir.
We can talk about it.
All right, the next item up. Are you done with this presentation?
There are actually three slides left in the presentation, which we'll go through very quickly. We just wanted to talk a little bit about two things. On September 4th, you voted to have us address the two extremes that we had in our district, the fact that more students than anticipated wanted to come back in person and a, a large number of students wanted to learn remotely. So the, the first adjustment we made was based on the schools with wait lists. We told you there were 30 to 33 schools with wait lists. You gave us permission to bring students back off those wait lists under certain circumstances. At the same time, we had under-enrolled schools. We had schools, Ms. Belcher pointed out, one that had only five students enrolled in person. So while schools were working to see how they could safely bring students off the wait list, other schools were working with parents to see if they wanted to send additional children back to schools in which the in-person population was under-enrolled. So both of those things have been going on. In no case have we violated the safe seating guidelines. And hopefully by quitting time tomorrow, we'll, we'll have ready for every board member, a list of every school with the safe seating capacity, the number of students desiring to come back in person, the number of students desiring to finish first nine weeks online, so that you can see the total enrollment for each school based on the guidelines that you have set. The next slide's going to show you the details of enrollment at Ellentree Middle and High School. And as we look at this slide, I just ask everyone to keep in mind that the next section, we're going to look at metrics and our district is in much, much better situation than we have been since mid-July with respect to metrics. So Buffy?
Okay, so the information on this slide is intended to really to provide you with a snapshot of our previous active student enrollment as well as our current, although certainly evolving enrollment information. Based on our school verification, if you were to bring, if we were to bring back students whose schools confirmed their preference by August 28, we would need to serve a total of 18,951 total students in person. That's approximately 37.2% of students based on our active enrollment or active student counts in our official student information system, which is Power School as of that September 3rd date. In schools where safe capacity exceeded our family preferences for in-person, especially in our Title I schools, leaders have been working diligently, just as Dr. Postaway alluded to, to reach out to families and bring those students back for in-person instruction, while of course, still continuing to observe all the safety protocols and measures and keeping within the boundaries of what would be deemed safe capacity. As such, and based upon the information that has now been provided by our schools, we have approximately 19,765 students who really would prefer in-person instruction. Of that number, approximately 11,144 of these students are currently being served in person in our schools. According to this information that we have, in order to serve all students who now prefer in-person, we would need to serve an additional 8,621 students. Based on the active number of students in Power School, again, as the September 3rd date, the total number of, or amount of students who would be in person would equate to approximately 39% of the student population. In contrast, if we serve the number of students that were preferring in-person as of that August 28th date, we would bring in approximately 7,807 additional students with a total of students being served in person by October 1st at 18,951 or somewhere around 37.2% of the total population. So just to help you, help provide some context to the fluidity or fluidity of student counts or enrollment at this time and really at the beginning of any school year that you have, currently for CCSD schools included in the numbers that are reflected on this table, the number of active students in our official student information system indicates 43,833 students. I hope that this information is helpful to you and you can see that, you know, we, we certainly have had some changing circumstances depending on the need in, in specific schools.
And then in the next slide, Carolyn Belcher is going to give an update on children who sat at the other extreme. Those are children whose families want them to stay at home and for whom we feel we need to provide some additional supports. Carolyn?
Thank you. So we've had several meetings since we last spoke to the board about the idea of the learning pod. Ms. Michelle English-Watson, working with Don's team, is spearheading a multi-team effort to make sure that we're thinking about what would most be helpful to parents. So the idea here again is to create small groups of kids so that children get exposed and opportunities to enjoy and socialize with other kids and have some study and academic supports, whether that's help getting, logging into the computer, completing their assignments, other things. Right now, our plan is to, to target by October 1, the Shakora Cherokee feeder pattern, which includes Mary Ford Morningside, North Charleston High School, to try to set the pods up. We're speaking and have been speaking over the last week with parent advocates at the school side level, with parents themselves and with some of our community partners about what do parents need? Do they want after school? Would they be comfortable sending their child to a church with another adult there? Or if they're uncomfortable with school, is it better if it's located in a neighbor's house? What's the right way to do this? And I think the incredible news is that since we introduced this idea, we've had lots of interest from the faith community, the not-for-profit service community, as well as funders and retired teachers. So very hopeful we'll be able to tell you how many we have up and running by October 1.
And that concludes this section.
Okay, we'll go around questions. Start, Ms. Coates.
So if we can go back to the school enrollment snapshot dated 9/13/2020. So I think the first thing that confuses me is it says additional students returning by October 1st, based on the school's August 28th verification, is 7,807 students. And we had a special called meeting because that was a time-sensitive, we knew the answer, we needed action meeting that was 3,100 students less than that. How did we go from 4,703 enrolled on August 28th to 78,07? Seems like August 28th is a static date. We should have known that number and it doesn't, it doesn't change. If their preferences changed since then, they changed, but why does it say a different number for August 28th now than was said eight days ago, nine days ago?
So on August 28th, we were talking with you about those 30, 31, 32 schools that had students on the waitlist specifically. And we said this doesn't apply to 50 schools. And those 50 schools had under enrollments. So at the same time, the students that, in the, the schools who were working with waiting lists were working, the schools who had under-rolled numbers of students were working, were contacting those parents to see if more parents were interested in sending their students back. And after several parents came in for the leap week and saw the setups, they felt more comfortable sending students back.
And I, and I get that and I'm glad for that, but I still don't understand how we had a waitlist on August 28th and that number changed. People got more comfortable, but people who were in under-enrolled schools weren't on a waitlist. There was no waiting list. So I, I think we're just, we as a board are really struggling to keep a handle on that bottom line. Safe, no student will, no school exceed the safe seating capacity, but then we keep seeing changing numbers. It's tough for us to, to, to go out there and help kind of justify what we're doing when even the, I mean, I don't need to say it again, it was a number on August 28th. Didn't change on, it, it shouldn't change.
It, it didn't change for the 30-some schools we talked with you about. And the other schools didn't have waiting lists, but they were under-enrolled, like five students enrolled in a middle school. And that middle school has now accepted more students.
But I think we only, I think some of us voted saying we were taking back 4,700 students on top of the students that were in the building. This looks like you're taking back 7,800. Which one, which one did we approve and which one are you doing?
We gave you a number to approve in those 30-some schools. We are not exceeding that number in those 30-some schools. Had our metrics not changed, we would have to be in a very different conversation with you. But we're in a different place with respect to metrics. We're going to look at metrics next.
So you're taking back 7,807 kids on the 21st?
Providing.
In our district.
And 3,000 of them are at schools that were under enrolled.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Can we follow up on, we had some schools like Simmons Pinkney, who five people said they wanted to be there in person.
For approving, bringing back students who wanted to be in schools who weren't in schools. That number doesn't, I'm, I'm confused. I'll follow.
Can we, can we have somebody follow up, Ms. Coates, after this? Just to, to know the numbers when and?
We, we were talking about the waitlist of schools and these children were not waitlisted. They have since then agreed to send their children back in under-enrolled schools that did not have waitlists.
Okay, Ms. Green, question?
No, I, I would like to say that.
Ms. Frazier?
High school's still October 1st though, to solve that problem, right? Because the 21st was different.
That's right. We, we're still finalizing. If we can bring back some kids on the 21st, we will do that. But we can't commit to all of them by until October 1st.
And I know some of us have gotten some emails from people saying that their preferences weren't updated. Should we redirect them to their principal as the primary point of approach?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Reverend Collins?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Postaway, though, from my understanding, when you look at the students applying in-person as of September 11, then you go to the next column, there's current in-person students as of September 3. The September 11 is 10,003, 10,002. But then you say, then that's, but the current in-person is September 3 now. It's 6,745, right?
The 6,745 students are currently attending in-person, yes, sir.
Okay, so, okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So 6,745 for elementary school are in the schools now?
Yes, sir.
So, so you're saying that September 11 was a couple of days ago, those are the people that said they prefer in-person? Or you have those students for the 10,000, 3,002? In the second column, elementary?
So.
Are those actually inside the classrooms?
The 10,302 are those who would, as far as we know, that's, that's the number that would, the total number of students, both those in school now, plus those that indicated they want to send their children back to school. So as of for elementary schools around September 21, we would anticipate that there would be about 10,300 students in school in-person.
Okay, so you're anticipating September, what date you said?
21st.
Okay, so the September 11 was, when I'm trying to find, the September 11, those are the ones that requested in-person? Or your, was it district prediction? Or actual, or the 6,745 is the actual, which one is the actual number of in-person elementary?
6,745 is the actual number.
Reverend Collins, if you could wrap up your question, please.
Yes, I do want to ask you to be patient because we're dealing with something that's life and death. We can't, we can't blade through it in two minutes.
Okay.
Not with this, but I'm almost done. I didn't get the last one, ask a long question.
If we can continue around, everybody's getting two minutes and I'll come back to you, Reverend Collins.
Okay.
Ms. Darby?
That's what I'm understanding. So we're saying that.
Go ahead, Reverend Collins, I'll come right back to you.
I didn't get an answer.
Took you two minutes to ask a question. They, she said 6,745.
10,300 want to be there. And on the 21st, 4,000 plus or minus kids will show up in addition to what they're.
Right, so that's what I'm trying to make sure I understand. So September 11, that number will go to 22,000?
No.
On September 11th, which was a few days ago, we think 10,300 kids wanted to be in school. But today, they're 6,700. The difference is who's going to show up on the 21st.
Right, but that's, so I'll come back. That's, but that's really what I'm trying to figure out, where the other kids are.
And since this is a common question, can we get Dr. Postaway, who would be the best person for us to follow up with?
The best person to follow up with for the details on this chart would be Buffy Roberts.
Okay.
I hope you can see the confusion in it.
I know, I do. And I've got a question on it, I've written down to follow up with after. So Ms. Roberts in particular, can you follow up with Reverend Collins, Ms. Coates, and Ms. Green on this?
Yes, sir, I'm happy to do so.
Okay. Right, yeah, particularly that 2,700 who's unaccounted for. Ms. Darby?
Yeah, so just real quick, I think I know the answer, but I just wanted to check with Ms. Belcher and with Dr. Postaway. So in, in the schools that are by September 21 and October 1 are going to have a lot more kids, and then we have some schools that have a lot less kids. Are we reallocating our teacher resources? Or how are we doing that to meet those needs? And I know we still have kids who are learning virtually through all that time, like, so that we can keep our kids still meeting the safe school metrics.
So our, our plan is to, well, I think the good news is that our metrics are actually going in the right direction. So the pressure around making sure that we had to reassign teachers has, hopefully, will continue to have been lightened now so we can bring teachers back in-person because we're at the medium level. Our plan was to have folks apply for leave through HR offices or to work with HR and learning services around switching assignments if we really couldn't find a good fit.
Okay.
And then additionally, there are some schools that will need some personnel beyond those they currently have. So several people from the district office will be going out to work in schools.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, the next, next item up is the Safe Start Restart Metrics?
Yes, sir. So just as a quick review, because this gets very confusing and you can tell from some of the questions you've had from the public that there's a great deal of confusion around what the metrics actually are. So DHEC has metrics, but DHEC never tied their metrics to any sort of back-to-school action. They said their DHEC metrics were not to be used in isolation of other factors and they were not to be used to drive school open decisions. But the three metrics that DHEC uses are the two-week incident rate, the trend in incidents rate, and the positivity rate based on the two-week average. Separate from that, Accelerate Ed, which was a 13-person committee convened by Molly Spearman, made some recommendations. And people look at the first part of the sentence, they don't look at the last part of the sentence. Accelerate Ed said that if your school district is in the low category with respect to DHEC metrics, which had not been set at that time, that you would operate normally if there's low or no spread of COVID-19 in the community and low to no positive cases within a school, that you would bring some students back, which they refer to as a hybrid model, if there were medium spread in the community and medium spread in the school, and so forth. The same thing with the high spread. So people look at the first part of the spread in the community, but they forget about looking at the spread in the school. When our district adopted metrics, we decided to use the three indicators that DHEC selected, and that's shown on the next slide. So the three point values from DHEC or the rating regarding the two-week incidence, the trend in incidence rate, and the two-week positivity rate. So we said if the incidence rate is low, that would be two points. Medium would be one point. High would be no points. So same thing across all three of those variables. We said if we're two or fewer points, the board has to decide the operating guidelines. So the board votes to establish operating guidelines. You did that July 27, again on August 10, and again, as just been pointed out, on September 4. Phase two is when we have three or more points. Excuse me, three points. And then phase three is when we have four or more points. So we have been in phase one, we are not in phase one any longer. So let's look to see where we are. As of Saturday night at midnight, we were showing 173 incident rates, incidents per 100,000. So, excuse me, about 174 incidents per 100,000. Today, we're showing 154 per 100,000. So we're clearly in the medium spread rate on that particular indicator. This slide is from the DHEC site. Again, Saturday night at midnight. Erica, if you could advance to the next slide. It shows the positivity rate over 14 days. So you see the 14-day graphs at the bottom. And at the top, you see 8.9% positivity rate. Now, as of today, that's 8.6% positivity. So coming into this meeting, what we did was take the data from Saturday night and plot them on your dashboard. So the next slide shows that. As of Saturday night, we were sitting at 174. Today, we know that's 154. So that's still in the medium category. That is one point. We are in the low incident rate, that is two points. And we are now sitting at 8.6 positivity. So that's, again, is in the medium range. So that puts us well within starting back schools. That actually puts us in phase three, which is four points. I wouldn't be surprised if our incident rates don't go up because a lot of college kids are returning if they use their Charleston County address and get tested and they happen to have an outbreak. That's going to show up in our data. But the celebratory news is for now, Charleston County is solidly within the medium spread rate. So if we look at, Erica, if you could back up to slide number 19. You see four different colors of blue on this map of South Carolina. The darkest blue is high incident. The next to darkest blue is moderate, moderately high. We are in not the lightest blue, but almost the lightest blue. So we're in moderate incidence. So we have made a huge improvement in Charleston County over the past two or three weeks. Hopefully that will continue. But we are solidly now within the operating parameters that are established by, by anyone's metrics. So we aren't at low incident rate yet, but we're well within the medium range. That concludes the report on metrics.
Okay, the next item up is a mission critical update? Okay, go ahead. Sorry, Reverend Collins.
Was it early, early on, was it, was the numbers, 200 incidents per 200,000? Was that earlier numbers or was it the same, same that was based on 100,000 alone?
We're always, we're using the same baseline. It's per 100,000.
Was it 200 for 100,000 considered higher than before?
It has been, 201 per 100,000 has consistently been the cut that met, that DHEC has used for the high range.
So they're not saying that, they don't recommend then a safe number or low number for returning to school? They're just giving, they're just telling whoever, high, medium, or low?
That's right. DHEC does not make recommendations about returning school based on their metrics. They ask each of their regional directors to work with local school officials in examining a whole lot of factors in a community and making those decisions.
Is MUSC or, I guess, I guess who's driving our decisions in that it was time or not to answer what school? Who are the people that are driving our decisions that's working with you?
We work with experts at MUSC, we've talked about that before, and with our local DHEC, as well as with some pediatricians who are affiliated with MUSC.
So it seems safe then for now, using social distance?
Well, we always have to assume that someone in every crowd we're with is COVID-19 positive. So each of us is responsible for covering our faces, washing our hands frequently, and maintaining distance. That's the, the best safeguards we have in, in understanding we're in the middle of a pandemic. So there are never any guarantees, Reverend Collins, but this is as safe as we can possibly get. In addition, our district has spent over $19 million making sure that we've taken every possible precaution regarding air filters, the filtration of fresh air, the plexiglass dividers, the extra sanitation, and so forth.
There's actually, is it possible that at some point we'll, we'll be able to some type of temporary wash stations near our classrooms? I know Ms. Burrowy said they have some sanitizing stations in the hallway, but would it be possible that somebody has some, what I call, clean wash stations near multiple in the hallways that all the students and teachers aren't using, going to that same point to wash their hands or to sanitize, so we can kind of reduce the amount of contact at the location by having more, more portable units available?
It's my understanding that we've been advised that, that the hand sanitizing, having hand sanitizer readily available is a better option than trying to establish additional wash stations that, that in and of themselves can be unsanitary. But that's Mr. Burrowy's area.
So I would say certainly we could look at it, Reverend Collins, but the fact is, Dr. Postaway mentioned, we have hand sanitizer in multiple locations. Many of our classrooms have their own sinks. We have the bathrooms throughout the, throughout the campuses. I, I think we're in pretty good shape right now with, without that additional movement. I mean, we certainly look at it. But I feel very comfortable and everyone's been comfortable with the, with the setup we have now.
Mr. Frazier, you got any questions? Ms. Green?
Ms. Coates?
Ms. Darby?
Nope.
Reverend Mack? Okay. Moving on to the next item is the cultural competency update?
Mission critical.
Yeah.
So, excuse me. Mission critical, sorry about that.
We didn't want everyone to think that we had forgotten about mission critical throughout. So just very quickly, want to highlight a few of them. We want to talk about the acceleration school work that's going on, the focus on early childhood, what's happening at the Mary Ford Center and at Shakora, the Boust and Meminger expansions. And most notably, we want to mention that the work that the board did resulted in doubling the number of low socioeconomic status students who are at Boust and making a significant difference, a substantial difference in the number of African-American and Hispanic students who were eligible to attend Boust at the 75th percentile and above. So Carolyn is going to provide more details along with some others in learning services at this point. Carolyn?
Thank you. So as a reminder of the board priorities, we said we would report back to the board on a quarterly basis. So I provided a comprehensive written report of all the board priorities in, that's public as well as part of the board packet. But we're going to highlight some key things. And as time goes on, we'll also flag where the next update will come or if the project's been complete, so that we'll start to narrow our list as we hopefully accomplish our goals. So then the next slide, we're continuing and on track for our priorities around social emotional learning. The only big change from when we reported to the board in May is that we have roadmaps for every grade level that's focused on trauma and socially just lessons and that we've finalized where we're actually piloting the new SEL curriculum at North Charleston, Daniel Jenkins, Turning Point, and Clark Academy. On the next slide, as we shared in May, while we didn't see the progress that we were hoping for in terms of a significant increase in racial diversity at Academic Magnet, we are hopeful that we're going to see more progress in the outlying year. So wanted to flag that we have a larger, significantly larger ACE program this year as compared to last year. And also that Academic Magnet as a school community is investing in professional development from the Racial Equity Institute on cultural competency to make sure that they're creating a community that is welcoming and inclusive. This is a slide where I wanted to make sure that we spent a little time because we have more updates than we've had previously. First of all, I want to highlight that we have 14 acceleration schools now with Burns Elementary becoming Meeting Street Burns, 10 elementary, two middle school, and two high. Since last year, we have six new principals in 14 of the schools and an interim principal right now at Shakora. I did want to circle back, state waivers was a big piece that was potentially going to be important for acceleration schools. Sanders Clyde was the school that was still pursuing it at the time we reported in May. She was actually able to find music teachers who were traditionally certified. So she opted not to apply for state waivers. And I think the, the piece I wanted to make sure to cover today is that we have our first executive director of the acceleration schools and a small acceleration school team. So I'm going to introduce Ms. Jackie Haynes, who's on the call just so she can give, meet the board and give a little bit of information about herself.
Thank you, Carolyn. Greetings to the Board of Trustees Chair, Reverend Dr. Eric Mack, and to the Board of Trustees and the Vice Chair, Ms. Darby, and to all of the other board members. I'm elated and I'm honored to serve as the Executive Director of Acceleration Schools. So working in turnaround schools is my purpose and it is my passion to ensure that students in districts that have made school turnaround priority, such as Charleston County. So I'm really excited to be here to lead the initiative and to support the agenda in providing our best resources to close the achievement gap and the opportunity gap in our highest need schools. So I'm looking forward to working with other divisions to make that happen. My experience as a principal, high school principal, a principal coach and director of school turnaround in Hillsborough County, which is Tampa, Florida, has afforded me great opportunities in doing this work and in coaching principals in a district school turnaround initiatives. So I really do applaud CCSD for the time and work that has gone into the mission critical focus. And I look forward to the opportunity of improving our schools and working with other divisions within our district. I would definitely like to thank Dr. Postaway for her leadership during this time of COVID-19 and to Carolyn Belcher for a strong focus on instructional infrastructure and for the culture of care that they have for students. Acceleration Schools right now is a two-team, two-member team right now. So we're hoping to add others. And I would like to introduce Tanya McIntyre, who is a graduate of CCSD and has been extremely supportive. supportive in assisting my onboarding as well as other district division leaders to Charleston CCSD. So Tanya?
Hi, everybody. I'm Tanya McIntyre. I'm from Wadmela Island. I am a graduate of Frierson, Hot Gap, and St. John's. I am the daughter of a retired CCSD educator. I'm a parent of a 2012 CCSD graduate and this is my 26 year in education, 23 of which here at CCSD. I am excited and humbled to be working with Jackie and I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to introduce myself and to just work on the work that we have with acceleration schools. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Part of the work that Tanya is coordinating is our partnership with Leading Educators, which is a national not-for-profit that has developed expertise in providing academic support at scale. We're funding that primarily through Title I monies this year. And I wanted to call out that five principals, the acceleration team, Ms. McIntyre, Ms. Haynes, as well as the Learning Services Leadership Team, myself, Ms. Roberts, Emily Woody, as well as Dr. Williams and Ms. Simmons, all participated in the UVA week-long virtual summer session, which was a real helpful opportunity for us to make sure we're setting a shared vision, setting a couple of key priorities around coaching and the rigor of our instructional tasks in acceleration schools and making sure that we're aligning. I think the advantage also of the UVA partnership is that we're able to network with other districts who are making a similar investment, which just increases our peer group and opportunity to learn from positive outliers. On the next slide, early childhood and Mary Ford, I just want to make sure the board knows the school's open. We have 181 students currently enrolled at Mary Ford. Now, we do have challenges around COVID-19 in terms of the number of students who are coming in person. So we're working very hard to try to increase enrollment to the extent that parents are comfortable. And obviously this is a school that we're focusing our energy around the learning pot idea. And at this point, Mary Ford and Shakora are fully staffed. On the next slide, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Simmons as she led this work across the system. And I think there's a lot to be proud of in this initiative.
Thank you, Carolyn. If you could go back one, Erica. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Beust Academy and Meminger effort was truly a team effort by many and at the direction of the Board of Trustees and Superintendent. From the many engagement meetings to the community outreach, we are pleased with where both programs stand. At Meminger, the Learning Services Staff alongside the new principal, Dottie Brown, have developed a program that focuses on accelerating achievement, enriching, enriching our core instruction and providing positive social and emotional experiences for our students. At Beust, we have successfully expanded access to the program. 112 new seats have been offered in the expansion grades at grades three through six. Erica? Thank you. As it stands, 29% of Beust's expansion grades are represented by students of color, which is an 11.7 percentage point increase from about a year ago. Of that number, 16.5% are African-American, which is nearly doubled from this time last year, and 3.4% are Latino. Similarly, we saw an increase in the percentage of students from lower socioeconomic backgrounds, currently 29.3% compared to 13.3 the previous year. Want to take just a moment to thank everybody who contributed. So this was a wholesale effort from Jeff Burrowe, attending and helping me with many meetings, Buffy Roberts, Emily Woody, Robin Jones, Lisa Allison, and Principal White for all supporting this effort. We are proud of this work. We know that we still have some progress to make, but we did want to take a moment tonight to share with the board members. Thank you.
That concludes our mission critical update.
Okay, we'll go around Reverend Mack, you have any question? Ms. Darby?
Nope.
Reverend Collins?
A couple of acceleration schools. Yeah, so the 14 schools basically have seven new principals, right? Six in the interim. Use for example, the core, uh, core elementary example. Haven't, haven't they had about, about three or four principals in the last five years?
They've had several, yes, sir.
So even though you take the school and you put it in acceleration category and work to get it turned around, the half the schools have new principals. I'm concerned with stability and growth. Because when the parent gets familiar with a principal and the like the school climate and the like the staff there, they tend to support that school and get more involved. But a lot of times in like throughout North Charleston and, and some of what I call lower socioeconomic areas, there's a high principal turnover rate and often times a high teacher turnover rate or a lot of induction teachers working in those schools. And my point I'm trying to make is no matter what category put the schools in, they don't have stability and staff. They'll never come out of the acceleration zone. They'll, they'll continue to struggle and be at risk. So we have to have stable leaders in all our schools. And lastly, you know, you don't have to answer that right now. The 181 students at Mary Ford, what's, what's the capacity for the early childhood at Mary Ford? About 300, 300?
Is Ms. Foxworth on the line?
I'm not sure, so I'll follow up and check.
Last year was less than 100 students or what, within the early childhood, about 90 or so?
I'm sorry, Reverend Collins, I'm afraid I wasn't answering correctly. I'm happy to get the information, get back to you.
So all right, so when we consider the numbers at Mary Ford for pre-K and early childhood, I'd be mindful that on the, we have on, come up on the referendum, it's been about $90 million to change it, to combine Goodwin and Honey Park and Land Schools. And they create another early childhood center. It's, it's a lot of money. We need to justify the cost by the number, by the number of students that want to attend. You just can't spend, spend $90 million and don't have the kids to attend these schools. So, so usually when you combine schools like that.
Reverend Collins, can you wrap up this, this, that, I mean, the combination of schools is not on the agenda tonight, today?
Well, it is, mission critical. That's what that whole thing is. So someone, this, I just want to keep in mind that that's make sure we're doing the right thing before we spend that much money in early childhood and pre-K that we're going to have the students there that, that we can meet their needs.
If you can wrap up. And as I go around, board members, if you could end with a question and not just statement time. I didn't find a question in that.
But she wants to let her respond. I want to hear.
What, what, okay, go ahead.
I'll simply say the 181 children in person is an indication of COVID-19 impact, not the numbers of students who are available. So we'll, we'll have better numbers for you, but there's every indication that that early childhood center will be a, a thriving success.
Because the numbers are lower, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Because I mean, that's possible. I'm hoping that's right, that is correct.
And in our full capacity, so it's 320.
320, around 320. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Frazier?
I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Green? Ms. Coats?
So yes, first off, Ms. McIntyre doesn't look old enough to have been working here for 20 years.
Bless you.
I'm as a student.
She wasn't the board member.
But the one thing on that slide that did concern me about acceleration schools was that no school pursued state waivers. And I think one of the biggest and most lengthy conversations we had about these acceleration schools was giving them flexibility beyond what you could give them within the confines of a traditional school district. So I'm really concerned that given the flexibility beyond the confines of the traditional school district, they're now operating exactly within those same confines, no, no waivers. So can we, can we speak to?
I, I think some of that is the context though, ma'am, not necessarily that folks opted not to because remember COVID-19 began in March.
That was going to be part of my question.
The partnership piece ended in, we knew that we didn't necessarily have a, a school partner coming out at the end of the year in December and January. So it's only in those few months between January to March that folks were really thinking about waivers. Sanders Clyde had the clearest need at that point and she was able to meet her need through traditional methods. I do think schools had been interested in things like extended day and other options, but obviously there's also were some principal transitions and some of those are healthy transitions with people being promoted and retiring, but that meant that we have new principals who are setting a different agenda. I think the waivers are still on the table as an opportunity. It just wasn't something that was critical to anyone's strategy, but also people's strategy did adjust given that they were dealing with the reality of COVID.
So that really was going to boil down to my question. Is this a cultural decision for these 14 schools or was this kind of a COVID-related thing and we can expect to see more creativity in the coming years?
I think the latter, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. The next item up, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you very much. So this is an update on the cultural competency teams work that's taken place since the last time we did an update back in, in the spring. The first bullet here indicates that we have trained 1,006 staff under the implicit bias training. The implicit bias training is a set of four modules that we obtained from the Curran Institute from the Ohio State University. And the bait, the, the intent of those, of that training is to give a person, a people an awareness of what their own implicit biases are. They have an opportunity to take as part of the training implicit bias test. The training itself, although the employees have to, have to view the modules, there's a facilitation. So we have a team of facilitators that, that go through an hour and a half, two-hour presentation with the, with the trainees. The kickoff of each of those is a video, two videos, one done, that's done by Reverend Mack and the other one's done by Dr. Postaway. So you see we've done 1,006 staff members, including all SROs in the district as of August 23rd. Most, if not all, principals have gone through, a number of our teachers have gone through on a volunteer, voluntary basis and the, the rest of the school-based staff will go through throughout the school year. We have had two whole schools go through as a staff, North Charleston Elementary School as well as North Woods Middle School. And we'll be doing more of that as the, as the year unfolds. The second bullet here, Dr. Jessica Barry up at South Carolina State University. She has a program called Encourage Me, Go to Geets in the Classroom. We've had seven, seven to five people go through that session and we have more, more scheduled throughout the year. The next big initiative coming up is the REI Phase One Training, which is a two-day training that focused primarily on the historical perspective of why we have institutional racism within our institutions. We, we have a contract that we entered into with the RI people, REI organization two weeks ago. We will train 295 people, staff people over the next, over the course of the, the, the school year through June 30 of this year. The, the initial trainings in the, in the fall and the winter will be via Zoom. Depending on the pandemic, of course, we could potentially have in-person Zoom, in-person REI trainings this, this, this coming spring. The intent here is to train district leaders. So all cabinet members, the expanded leadership team, we have slots for board members if board members desire to, to, to attend. And then whatever principals have not gone through later in the fall will be principals and then teacher leaders throughout the, throughout the district. The last bullet here is we're creating, the team's creating a set of definitions of identifying a common set of languages of, of words rather and coming up with definitions. So as, as, as the CFO, if I talk about equity and someone else in the district's talking about equity, we have the same definition that we're talking about. If I'm talking about institutional racism, what does that mean for the district so that when we have that, someone else that's involved in that conversation? What's not shown on, on this slide, this past Friday, the team launched its cultural competency website. I'll be sending out a link to that tomorrow morning, so I'll make sure that all the board members have that. The link did go out to all staff this past Friday.
All right, going around the horn for questions, Ms. Coats?
Nothing, thank you. I know this is something you have been wanting to dig into, the, the nuts and bolts and the actions and thank you. I'm glad to know we're getting down and actually doing some tasks here.
All right, Ms. Green?
No questions, thank you, darling.
Yeah. Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in the REI program if you've got space. I'm sorry. I'd be interested in the REI program if you have space.
Oh, it's good.
Reverend Collins?
I think you said about how long did you say the implicit bias training is? Or was implicit bias?
Well, it's four, four, four video modules. So a, a person engages with those four modules by him or herself. I think when I did it, it took me an hour and a half for, you know, for the, for the four modules. And there's a, an implicit bias test that's associated with it out of Harvard. So that takes a little bit of time. And then the, the actual facilitation when the, so employees take a look at the, the modules independently, then we bring a group of employees together. We have facilitators that works through a set of questions and they're in breakout rooms in the Zoom and that is roughly an hour and a half.
So if it's only hour and a half, why not all the staff and teachers do it, principals instead of only 1,000? Why, why, why isn't everyone doing it?
So initially, we, we have to build the capacity of the district to do so. So the facilit, facilitation is a, a big part of it. And so we started out with a handful of facilitators and now we're, we're increasing the capacity by, by generating more facilitators. So as we get into the, to the school year, we'll have more of it. And then of course, when school, at the beginning of school, this is very abnormal school start. So we had to back off to give school-based people the opportunities to bring kids back in and learn how to teach during the virtual mode.
Lastly, at the end of the session, are there questions or did it test or did that pass or?
And, and then implicit bias training, there, there are no tests, it's just a dialogue. I will, I will say though, that what you see on this slide, these three sets of trainings, the implicit bias, the REI, and the Go to Geets, it's only a, a, three of a list of trainings that we will have. We've been doing research, we've been doing surveys, trying to make sure that we have the exact focus that we need here within CCSD, when that, within the context of CCSD. And so principals will have a, a menu of options to be able to choose from under the various trainings that we're developing.
Thank you.
Ms. Darby?
None, thank you.
Reverend Mack?
Uh, no questions.
Okay, the next item up is the Audit and Finance Committee review. We had the three items that are listed there, the 8% general obligation bond, bonds, the 2% charter admin fee that the board asked for us to address and a contractual matter regarding land. None of them are for action right now, but are there any questions on those for Mr. Kennedy? Go ahead, Ms. Coats.
Will they be for action at today's board meeting? Any of these on today's agenda?
I need, um.
The 2% charter.
2% charter and that's the only thing?
Yeah, I'll have to look at it.
The contractual matter is on it. We want to take it off. So the 2% is on there? So Todd, can you give us a rundown of?
It's not on there.
I don't, it's not on there.
I didn't think so. Okay, so the only thing was the contractual matter is being?
The two, just as a quick, as to what the 2% is, is authorizing the, or telling the district to go ahead and alert charter schools that the district may exercise their authority to charge 2% for the cost of administrating and dealing with charter schools.
These items will then just be on the next board.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Are any other questions on those three items? Okay, the next item up, Ms. Green, I'll turn it over to you. Okay, all right, so the, Mr. Kennedy?
Hold on. Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have it up. So which policy is this policy?
Sorry, this was the TIF.
So the TIF policy, last, last fall, I think it was in winter, the board adopted a TIF policy. That policy addresses how do we engage with the creation of a new TIF tax increment financing that a governmental entity might want to have us engaged with? We did not address at that time what would happen if an entity asked us to, asked the board to extend an existing TIF. So this simply brings that into this policy, using the same measures that we have in the, in the original policy for, for new TIFs.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we will go around, you can actually, this time you'll be able to vote. Is that right? Reverend Collins?
Yes.
You'll be able to vote on your computer, it'll come up. You'll be able to vote on your computer, it'll come up.
Yeah, click back in a minute.
As we wait for the votes, the next item coming up, Mr. Kennedy, is the fund balance policy update.
So I think it was like two years ago, two and a half years ago, the board did an update to the fund balance policy at that time. We put into a category on fund balance, a commitment, it's committed fund balance. And so there's a state statute that requires school districts to carry in their fund balance, a reserve amount that equals to the average of one month's of expenditures over the last two years. So as a backup for unknowns such as hurricane disasters, COVID disasters. So that's one month. The GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, recommendation is that there should be a minimum of two months. And so what this policy, proposed policy change does, it takes that from a one month, which is roughly $40 million for CCSD, to two months, which would be $80 million. And just for your information, we currently have roughly $105 million in fund balance, $40 million in the committed. And so this would allow us to, the policy actually say that a minimum 150% of the state requirement, so we would have to have, if it's passed, actually $60 million in committed, and any difference, which would be $20 million that goes to $80 million, would be in the undesignated fund balance. In the handout that you have, there's a table that gives some examples. If you take a look at that, I'm not going to answer any questions. It shows what the current policy states, it shows what our actual numbers are, and then it shows what the proposal is.
Member approval? We've got a motion to approve, is there a second? Ms. Green, seconds. Are you, in a minute, you will get a chance to vote.
Is this on the board agenda meeting today?
No.
No.
Okay, Reverend Collins got a question?
So, Mr. Kennedy, I want to make sure I understand. Will we be approving this today, unless you use the 150%, 150% you showed of, I guess probably 59? The 150%, is that equal to one and a half months of district operational expense?
You say 150%, is that what it says?
Is that like a month and a half worth of expenditure for the running district?
That's correct, but the policy change goes to actually two months, two months.
Right, so, but you use the number, you use the figures 100%, then probably you use 200%. I just want to make sure I understand, 200% of what the law requires, what you're saying?
That is correct.
Or recommendation from the other group?
What, 200% of what the state, South Carolina State statute requires? So the state statute requires 40 million, excuse me, one month, which is $40 million. And so this policy says change would be, take that to 80 million, which would be 200% of the state requirement.
All right, so...
It essentially, essentially, not withstanding the percentages that I have in there, it essentially doubles the requirement for CCSD.
So then you, so then a part of it came from unassigned, unassigned fund balance?
Sir?
The percentage became from unassigned fund balance, is what the writing says?
So we have a choice here, we can put 100%, if you vote to approve it, 100% of the requirement of $80 million into committed, and then you don't have to worry at all about the unassigned. But the minimum requirement in committed is $60 million. So anything that's different between the $60 million and the required, excuse me, within, yeah, the $60 million in this case, in the requirement would have to be a part of the undesigned. But again, the takeaway here is that we are doubling the requirement from, the proposal doubles the requirement from $40 million to $80 million, or 2% of operating expenditures.
Based on the recommendation.
That's right. And the reason for that is because of the uncertainties that we have associated with hurricanes and now the COVID-19 and the other potential disasters.
I think I understand.
Okay, any other questions on that? Everybody, or everybody's voted and both of those items passed. The next item up is the certification of delegates. Is there a motion?
I'd like to appoint Ms. Coates to serve as a delegate and ask Reverend Collins if he will be the alternate to represent at the 2020 Legislative Delegation Conference.
Second, Mr. Frazier, any further discussion? All right, if you are ready to vote, please. All right, now it's passed. The immediately following this, we will have a special called meetings. Is there a motion to adjourn? All right, we adjourn.
The move. We will start the special call meeting at 4:20. It's 4:00.